All in favor, opposed, motions carried. Welcome to the Wednesday, February 26th meeting of the Board of Education. Thanks that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent meditation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic since one nation under God in the this book of the peace and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Trumbett to present the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I know, I'm sorry to keep you waiting. I'm going to go right into student recognition, so I'm going to ask David Jackalitz and Mike Carroll to come on in, and they're going to introduce our music students that are being recognized tonight.
Hello, everybody. My name is David Jackalitz. I am one of the music chairpersons for the district, and today we are honoring our grade nine through 12 students who were involved in ensembles outside of the school. These are special honors ensembles that they were chosen for mostly based on excellence at the NISMA Festival as well as teacher recommendation. And specifically, the ensembles we're talking about are Lisva, which is the Long Island String Festival Association, SCMEA, which is the Suffolk County Music Educators Association, NISCAME, which is the New York State Council of Music Educators, and NISMA All-State and the NAFTME All Eastern Conferences as well. So I'm going to first invite all of the students who are here to come in and line up.
Going to keep going all the way over to Mr. Jackalitz almost.
Okay, not necessarily in order, but the students who are here today are Ethan Edelman, who was here for both Lisva and SCMEA, Eva Caracciola, who was here for SCMEA, Michael Cologne, who was here for SCMEA, Amber Dodge for SCMEA, Abigail Finn for SCMEA, Meredith Finnegan for SCMEA, Caitlin Howth for SCMEA, Kylie Hughes for SCMEA, Lenny Nowakowski for SCMEA, Roger Ortiz Sanchez for SCMEA, Brianna Sanchelli for SCMEA, Isabella Schwanner for SCMEA, Eric Speira for SCMEA, Madeline Suri Ortiz for SCMEA, Ved Tal Sania for SCMEA, Michael Walsh for SCMEA, Joe Johnson, who is here for SCMEA All-County Jazz. We have Ashley Fair, who is here for NISCAME, Kalen Lamb for NISCAME, Christopher Madlik, NISCAME, Amanda Morta for NISCAME, Jaden Rudnicki for NISCAME, Amanda Teller for NISCAME as well. I think when I said Brianna Sanchelli, I did not mention that. That is SCMEA and Lisva as well. In addition to this, we have two students here who were also selected to represent Sachem at the NISMA All-State Conference, which was upstate in Rochester in early December. And this is, the students who are chosen are, this is a statewide festival, the very top students in all of New York State, and those students were Jaden Rudnicki, who represented us playing French horn in the All-State Symphony Orchestra as his second consecutive year at All-State. And Joseph Johnson was selected as an alternate to play jazz guitar in the NISMA All-State as well. And finally, we also, with Jaden Rudnicki, he was also selected to participate in the All Eastern Orchestra on the French horn. The All Eastern groups are made of not just the top students in New York State, but the top students in the 12 northeastern states plus Washington, D.C. And it's an alternating year festival, only happens once every other year. And the last person to attend one of these in person was back in 2019. So it's a very rare and special feat that he was chosen for. And I would like to congratulate all of our students.
Yeah, we'll put you in picture.
Yeah, we're going to have to kind of double up. Maybe we can add some of the taller elements.
You guys can take these that have to.
Yeah. Go ahead and slide in. Yeah. Get nice and cozy. Right, I think we're looking good. We have everybody. Okay, big smiles, I'm going to take a bunch, she has blinkers. There's a lot of phones happening, but look at my camera. Thank you. Congratulations, and pause for the phone.
Because next, we're going to jump right into the budget. Yeah. Ah, see? Yeah. I stole my Sachem jersey, my hockey jersey. When I was at North, I'd go to the games. Allison, keep her. We're honoring, we're going to call them up. Get her. I want Pat to have a picture of being their principal.
We're going to move right into the budget presentation. And again, Mrs. Sarakis, you sure know how to clear a room.
Okay, can you hear me? You're good? Okay. So, welcome to budget presentation number three. I'm going to jump right in. We are going to review some of our revenue, which is actually the proposed property tax levy, because that needs to be submitted to the Office of the State Comptroller by March 1st. We're going to recap our salary codes, and then we will be reviewing all of what's called our 2,000 codes. This is all of our curriculum and instruction codes. It'll be general education, special education, and student support services. And then we will have some potential reductions to help balance the budget, and then we'll go over some next steps. So the proposed tax levy for the 2526 school year, we're looking at a 2.2005% increase. That is within the tax cap. We are not looking to pierce. That is a compliant levy that needs just a simple majority, 50% plus one. So if the board is in agreement, I will submit this to the State Comptroller by Friday. If there are any changes or anything material changes, that can be unsubmitted and then revised and resubmitted, but the first draft we have to submit by March 1st.
Questions or concerns? Is everybody okay with that? All right. So you should submit that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have reviewed our salary codes for the, over the last few budget presentations. We did it a little differently this year, where we're grouping all of the salaries together just to show, you know, what makes the district run. So we have approximately 1,900 staff members. So our current salary that we're projecting for 2526 is roughly $177.4 million. That's a 1.22% increase over the current year. I've already factored in, working with Mr. Sax, we have taken into account the retirees that have put in for retirement so far, and then who needs to be replaced. So that's already factored into those figures there. Another item that is included in salaries is the extra classroom activity fund treasurers, because those are required positions at all grade levels, elementary through the high schools. Even though we do not have, currently have clubs at the elementary level, we do have these accounts with funds that have to be monitored. So that's why we have those treasurers in the salary line items. So most notable at the bottom of what is not included in our salary items is our coaching, scorer, timer, chaperone pay for our interscholastic athletics, and the majority, the balance of the club stipends. Because as I said, we only have the treasurers right now factored in because they are mandatory. Yes?
Just for clarification, normally those things that are excluded would be included in these lines.
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions on salaries? So the next we're going to look at is our assistant superintendent supervision and special needs codes. Supervision is our principal line items, assistant superintendent for administration, our curriculum up at district office. You'll see, this is everything but salaries. So these are really just the general supplies, materials and supplies that we need in these codes. If you look at the first line item for curriculum, that's obviously not just materials and supplies, but that includes our test scoring materials, and these are things that we contract through our BOCs for. It also includes our AP exams and CTE testing, and those items are roughly $500,000 of that code. And the rest, as I indicated, is really just materials and supplies, those smaller amounts. School supervision, $52,000, but that is for the 15 buildings. Okay. Next, we have our general education codes, and again, these are everything but salaries. You will see the largest number on this page under regular school for $2.4 million. That is our instructional materials and supplies, so that addresses all of our general education, our art classes, our science classes, our CTE classes. Everything is in that code right there for that $2.4 million. And for the music, in addition to supplies and materials, we have instrument repair, which is why that seems like an increased number down there at the bottom. Most notable, you'll see on the third, the fourth line item down, you'll see arts and education. We have not included arts and education in this budget draft, because that is not a mandatory item. And again, the, kind of the theme we've been going with in all of these presentations is we're putting in our required and mandatory expenditures and holding off to the side anything that is more discretionary. So arts and education has been pulled out.
Michelle, what is arts and education, so people know?
I knew you were going to say that. So that, arts and education is programs that come into the schools. They can be in-school field trips, they can be shows during Christmas, like going to see A Christmas Carol. It's also our exploratory enrichment, where, I do have that email. I have it.
Michelle, you're doing great detail. It's just a lot of the enrichment things that we pull into the schools, such as programs, field trips.
And professional development, it's theater, it's dance, it's music, it's museums, trips, things of that nature.
It's anything enriching the school day that's outside the classroom for the most part.
So we do receive approximately 51% state BOCs aid on those expenditures. But if we have an $800,000 budget, and we are expenditure line, and we're receiving $408,000 in BOCs aid in the following year, we still have a $392,000 expenditure that is coming from the general fund. So that's why I wanted to show that as a separate line item there. Okay? So our next codes are our home teaching, our health, foster tuition. These are really minimal codes. It's just our, the foster tuition is obviously for our foster students. Under the home instruction, you'll see $225,000 there. That's mostly for our contract services. We have reduced these codes substantially by having the alternate evening high school, so we have seen a significant reduction in that home instruction code. Next is our Office of Student Services, which is our special education and the Committee on Special Education. So we broke this out into a little more detail, because it's one of our larger codes, but excluding salaries, again, you can see that this is a $24.2 million code. We're seeing a 10% increase in these line items, mostly driven by our private placement tuition. That is an increase of approximately $384,000. But then our BOCs placements and services, we're seeing an 11.9% increase. It's $1.7 million there for our BOCs placements. So that's what's driving the increases in our special education budgets. Then we have our occupational education, evening high school, library, and instructional technology. So occupational education includes two items. We have our programs that we have in district. That's our cosmetology, that's some of our tech classes. But the bulk of that code is our BOCs CTE program. You can see at the bottom that that is $3.2 million of that code. And the increase in our BOCs CTE from this current school year to 2526, we're looking at a $431,000 increase. But the BOCs CTE program is, we are billed on a three-year rolling average. So for the past several years, we have seen that enrollment go up, and we have been billed, for example, the current year, I think we're being billed at around 180 or 190 students. But we have about 207 students in the program. So based on that rolling average, next year is really when we have, the three-year average is over 200 students. So that's why we're seeing such a significant increase in that code. Also important to note, any changes that we want to make to that would not affect the next school year. We would see, if we wanted to see savings, it would be for the 2627 school year. So that's what's driving those increases there. The next largest area is our instructional technology. And you'll see that there is roughly a $960,000 increase in our instructional technology. What's really driving that is our multi-year contracts, no, multi-year licenses. Thank you, Mr. Sax. We have a three-year contract coming up for our firewall, and then we have a five-year contract coming up for our access points for our software. So that's why we're seeing such a large increase there.
Just a question, Michelle. So is that, are we paying three years in advance, did you just say, or?
We're paying a three-year in advance for the hardware at the firewall, and a five-year for the access points.
And is there an option to go year to year?
It was much more expensive to go.
On an annualized basis. I sell software for a living, so I know that, but yeah.
So it did make sense to go with the multi-year contract. So as for any multi-year contract, and we do this with our transportation, and we do it with our, our Canon copiers, we have to note that in our budget newsletter that we are entering into a multi-year agreement. So that will be part of that.
Michelle, does that also include the upkeep of the Chromebooks?
So the last, not in this budget, so in the end of, I'm trying to, in so many years now. In the end of 2324, we budgeted through one of our, I think it was through one of the grants, for the Chromebook refresh, and Mr. Render did that purchase at the end of 2324, so that that would take us through 2425. With the multi-year contracts in the budget now, we're looking to do the next Chromebook refresh, not in the 2526, but in the 2627 school year.
Oh, Michelle, can you provide us with the numbers for an annual cost on these things?
Absolutely. I'll put that in the Friday.
Because I'm just trying to understand, you mean, do we shell out the money now? And we've certainly got issues, right? We've got concerns, so we just have to make a decision. Do we want to pay all this upfront, knowing that it may cost us more annualized, but if we need to offset things this year?
I'll put that in the Friday letter.
Thank you.
So that three-year contract and the five-year contract that you pay in advance, then we won't, do we have other things next year that are also contract like that?
I don't.
So we have a reprieve for three, or three and five years from these other items?
Correct, correct.
Except that's where we would look to do our Chromebook refresh.
Right.
In this line.
Okay. Central registration and guidance, those are much smaller codes. Again, it's materials and supplies. The bulk of the guidance is our NAVYANCE program for the college application and college tracking. The one thing that is not included in the guidance budget codes is the college visits for our guidance counselors, because we had removed all travel and conference for all areas. That was in the last presentation, and so we pulled it out for this as well. And I will have a chart towards the end of the presentation that shows everything that we've pulled out of the budget so far. And then last, we have our interscholastic athletics, phys ed, and health services. And again, you'll see here for the administration and phys ed, those are really materials and supplies. Health services, that is for our district resident students that attend private and parochial schools. We get billed by the school district of attendance for health services for any students that are in private schools within their district. So that's what that dollar, $372,000 represents. And then finally, at the bottom, for interscholastic athletics, it did not include any of the equipment, travel, officiating, or any type of BOCs expenditures related to our athletics. The same way, we didn't include the chaperoning and coaching stipends into the salary line items. I just wanted to show, not included is the $1,051,000 for the expenses related to our athletic programs. So in summary, the instructional codes that we covered tonight are approximately $39 million of the school district budget. And, you know, that's just a summary of what we could just covered. And then what we had covered at the last meeting was our non-instructional codes, and those represent approximately $341 million of our budget. There was approximately $3.7 million increase from the last presentation to tonight's presentation. That's because the BOCs portal was open, and we were able to start putting in the operational softwares and services that we use from BOCs on the non-instructional side. So in total, these are our expenditures by object. The total budget we're looking at right now is $380.4 million. That represents a 1.63% budget-to-budget increase. And again, there are items that are not included. These are our required and mandatory expenditures for running the school district at that $380.4 million. So when I recap from our revenue side, we have our state aid. We're waiting to hear what's going to happen with the state adopted budget. So we're holding that $140 million in state aid. We did recognize an additional $1 million in our other revenue category, and that is due to our E-rate services.
Category two E-rate services for instructional technology purchases. We get about 50% back from government agency called USAC. So Mr. Render and I are working on that diligently.
So we were able to recognize a million dollars in revenue on expenditures we already had in the budget. So that was a good find for us. And then we have our tax levy. We're showing in the appropriated, the reserves and appropriated fund balance, we had discussed utilizing any surplus from the current 2425 school year. Mr. Sax prepares monthly, starting in January, those appropriated reports of where we think we're going to close out the school year. And as of the January report, we were looking at about an $11 million surplus. So you're going to have that next report next week. So we will continue to update that monthly, and as, obviously, as we get closer towards the end of the year, those numbers start to find tune, but we think that $11 million is a solid number. So when you look at our total revenues, we're at $378.6 million in revenues, but we're at $380.4 million in expenditures. So based on the required and mandated expenditures, we still have a budget gap of approximately $1.8 million. If we want to look at the items that have not been included in our budget, which is all travel and conference, it's our clubs outside of the extra class activity treasurers that we're required to have, it's all of our athletics for $3.4 million. It's the BOCs arts and education, and it's the transportation that would be required for any field trips, athletics, and music trips. So that comes to $4.7 million in items that are not included in the budget. So if we were to add those in, then our true budget gap goes from $1.8 million to $6.5 million. Anybody have any questions on that so far?
Questions from the board?
Okay. So then we were discussing some potential areas that we could reduce.
Michelle, I have a couple of questions. So I just want to see if I can encapsulate what you just told us, because it's an amazing story. So what you just told us was, if we just had, in our district, things that are completely mandated and contracted for, it would be a $380 million budget.
Correct.
And that would be about 1.63% increase. So, but based on our tax levy, based on our other revenue, and based on our currently projected state aid of 0.9%, I point out, and presuming we're going to use everything left over from this year, that's the $11 million, but that $11 million does include some one-time revenue sources that will not be there next year. But let's presume it's $11 million. We are, based on those naturally occurring revenue sources, we are insufficiently funded to the tune of $1.8 million. And that's a district that has absolutely no sports. That's a district that has absolutely no extracurricular activities, no clubs, right? All those things.
Correct.
So, but I think the public needs to realize that we're $1.8 million short just to do what we would be required to do by the state. So to me, we're insufficiently funded by the state mechanisms, right there. And that's even using everything of our leftover appropriated fund balance. Now, if we wanted to put back what we have, and what we're doing today is actually a reduction of what was occurred in 2324, right?
Correct.
In fact, I think there's only half the clubs are running, so those opportunities are gone.
We, there were no elementary clubs running, and the secondary clubs were reduced by 25% because I think some of the, like, national honor societies were taking up most of the budget.
And we are down roughly 60 staff members from that period of time already?
60 to 70 with retirements.
Okay, so 60 to 70 staff members. So even in our reduced state, we're still short $1.8 million on just the things that we're required to do by the state.
Correct.
And our contracts, which I would point out again, when you look back at our And our contracts, which I would point out again, when you look back at our expenditures, our contracts, which are biggest one, biggest salaries, is not rising nearly the rate of inflation, right? So the budget that we can, the things we can control, we've controlled very well. So now, we get to this point of what are we going to do? So I guess you're going to go through a couple of scenarios. Well, one scenario I would point out is that if we wanted to at least maintain what we have today, well, last year, we tried to pierce the budget, I think it was 4.87, right?
Yes.
That's what we tried. Had that passed, that tax levy would be about $6 million more, which means we wouldn't be even discussing this problem right now.
Correct.
Right? So again, it's our tax levy, well, there's two parts to this, I'm sorry, let me step back. One is, we should all be aggravated at Albany. We should all be up at Albany right now, jumping up and down, because I cannot, for my life, understand how this district only gets 1.25 million, where districts that are similarly situated are sitting on 10 and $12 million more. That's an argument for Albany, right? That's where Doug Smith comes in, that's where Alexis Week comes in. They're the ones we should be arguing up there. So the only thing we have that we can use to help ourselves again is a tax levy, right? And as you mentioned last meeting, the tax levy, the state aid is based on the combined wealth ratio. That's based on our, I guess, how we do our tax returns, we put code 553 on the tax return, and they know how much we're making. And apparently, the people in this district have gotten a little wealthier. So they believe they can reduce our state aid because our community has the ability to pay more, right? But the mechanism for our community to pay more is the tax levy, which is controlled by a formula now, that's 2% or CPI, whichever is less, right? Which is really basically why that tax levy has deviated so far from where it needs to be. So we need to make a hard decision if we're going to, I don't believe we can continue to cut our way to success, because every year, the target changes, right? Target went from 374 million to 380 million, just in mandated things, right? So every year, the target changes. So every year, no matter what we do, if we don't change our revenue stream, we're going to be chasing this by cutting, right? So eventually, you cut yourself to bankruptcy, right? Or you cut yourself to nothing. So I'm still of the opinion that we should consider making some cuts where necessary, but I do believe we should try to increase that tax levy again, and go out to the public and try to pierce the cap to change that levy's trajectory. That's just me. We can now go through all the cuts that Michelle wants to talk about, and we can make a decision.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, so some potential reductions that would impact the 2526 school year could be increasing the elementary, elementary class size by two. We would see an approximate savings of $800,000. If we eliminate the middle school, club, and late buses, we'd have a savings of $740,000. If we eliminate combined middle school sports, and that would be the gymnastics, swimming, the girls' tennis and the boys' tennis, we would have savings of $42,100. And then if we combine the JV teams and combine the varsity teams, not together, the JV teams and the varsity teams, we would see a savings of $1,051,000. So those savings, all totaled, would be approximately $2.6 million.
Michelle, for clarification, when you say combine the teams, you're talking about, it would be one sports team, okay? For north and east, for all of our sports.
Correct.
And that's $1.1 million.
$1 million, yes, yes. So there is one additional potential savings for 2526, which we just found out could be for 2526, that's why it's on the next slide, would be, we could revise our transportation limits. We could put a proposition two on the ballot to change our limits. We currently are at, for K, yeah, half a mile for K, from kindergarten through 12th grade. Anything greater than a half a mile gets transportation. The state limit is K8 is anything greater than two miles, and 9 through 12 is anything greater than three miles. And then the maximum distance for the state is 15 miles. Our limits are K8 is anything, the maximum is 15 miles, but our 9 through 12, the maximum is 25 miles. So if we could put a proposition up that would increase the K8 transportation limit to greater than one mile and less than 15 miles, and the 9 through 12 transportation limit to greater than one and a half miles and less than 15 miles, which would be exactly half of the state's limits, and we could see a potential savings of $1,750,000 by doing that. And we did find out that we could do that. If we put it on the ballot for this year, we could do that for the 2526 year if it's approved.
Michelle, if you just provide the, when you say change those limits from 25 to 15, how does that impact our community? So people are very clear what that means.
So at, at the K through eight level, it would be anyone that is one mile or greater would qualify for transportation. At the, reducing the 9 through 12 limit from the current 25 miles to the 15 miles, which is the state limit, that would eliminate some of our private and parochial schools. So our, for instance, our St. Anthony's and our St. John the Baptist, those schools would fall outside. The majority of those students would fall outside of that. I believe when we checked with transportation, there was a handful of students, and I can't remember which school it was, that are at like the 14.8 mile limit, and that would be a transportation we would contract out with BOSI's. They do shuttles to various districts for the private and parochial schools.
But the majority of them would not have transportation.
The majority would not have transportation, correct.
And that would require voter approval.
Correct, correct.
Ms. Scharni?
Just so we're clear, we would have to budget with that, not, we would have to budget so that reflecting that it could fail.
Correct, correct.
So the current budget would have to reflect the cost, this 1.75. We would only realize that savings if that proposition passed.
Correct.
Then it would end up falling back into.
As surplus, it would be unspent funds for 2526. Okay. Then some other options, if the district, if we were to close an elementary school, we would have savings of approximately $2 million for the closure. And then if we were able to rent that building out to another entity, we could recognize approximately $600,000 in recurring revenue at an elementary level. And if we were to close a middle school, we would have approximate savings of $3.2 million and the potential rental revenue of $1.5 million. So there, those three options, you have a potential savings of $6.9 million and a potential revenue stream of $2.1 million per year, recurring.
So just for, first for the community, so they understands, if we go down the path of closing a middle school, that's going to require moving sixth grade back to the elementary school, right? And redistricting.
Correct.
Okay, so that's sort of one of the things to consider.
Correct. Okay. Any, any questions?
Questions, Mary?
So I was, I had asked a few board meetings ago about changing the transportation, revising that. And many, many years ago, probably 50 years ago or so, the community decided that they didn't want to have what the, what the state mandated, they wanted to have less than that, which costs us a lot of money. And if you've been near any of our schools during drop-off or dismissal, you'll see that there are a lot of cars. And the reason that there's a lot of cars is because a lot of people who are entitled to a bus under these current guidelines don't utilize the bus. They drive their children. And I know how hard it is as somebody who always worked, and my children were always being picked up by somebody else, you know, a friend that would always help me out, because my husband and I both worked, and we couldn't do some of these things. I know the impacts seem tremendous, but these, this transportation costs us a ton of money. And if you look at the children that are actually utilizing it, it, there's a, there's a significant difference. And years ago, we voted to cut other buses. And the reason we voted to cut those buses, it was after, it was, what was it, like the 330 bus, I think it was, at the high schools or whatever? We went down to less after-school buses at the high schools. And the reason we did that is because it was costing us like $750,000 a year, and I think that there was something like less than 40 students on a whole were using those buses. So we're paying $750,000 for 40 students to get home. Because parents would say, oh, it took them so long to get home, I'm just going to go pick my kid up. So these are the things that we, we have to think about that really could help this district save money. And yes, there's growing pains with it, and yes, there's uncomfortable issues, and you will probably have to rely on friends to, to help you out, just like I did. But saving $1.7 million for buses that we sometimes don't utilize the way that they should be, I think is a pretty good thought. And I think, you know, that's why it needs voter approval. But it's something that if anybody else needs clarification, please reach out to us. Don't put stuff on social media that doesn't, that doesn't ring true. If you have a doubt about it, come to any one of us, send us an email, call us, reach out to us. We would be happy to explain these things to you.
Ms. Scharni?
I guess what we really should do is get from, get from transportation. We have utilization, does transportation keep utilization numbers? Are the buses really half-full going into the schools?
I can get those.
Okay, I mean, we probably should see that, right? So we can explain it.
Also, Michelle, that $1.7 million obviously is going to affect private and parochial school students. We have the number of kids that would be impacted, CHM students that would be impacted by it, if that change was to happen.
I can get that for you. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I could put that in the Friday letter.
And the other thing too is, I mean, obviously, we couldn't realize closing a school, an elementary school and middle school all in one year. So I would imagine that this would be a tiered approach. You would close one one year, and then another second year to realize that $6.9 million savings.
Right, right. A lot goes into, it's not just closing the building, it's, it's redistricting and.
Questions from board members?
Okay, so our next steps, like I said, at the end of this week, I will file the tax levy with the state comptroller. We do have budget presentations set for March 12th and March 26th. And then the budget adoption is April 9th, and the hearing on May 7th, and then obviously, the budget vote on the 20th.
So just, I'm sorry, again, just one suggestion that I would make, and having gone through this for, I don't know, the last 20 years. You know, we have two more meetings before it has to be, you know, has to be adopted April 9th. We might want to look at our calendars, okay, and look at maybe some potential tentative meetings, because some of the things that are on here are pretty serious cuts. You know, that's going to impact many, many kids. And this is not something that I don't think we're going to be able to get done in two meetings. So it's just something that I think we should probably consider.
And then if we go down the option of closing the school, we have to notify the state by March 1st. So that's, so that's an issue that has to be decided. If we're going to do it for this school, next school year, we need to have a decision this week if our intent is to go down that path, right?
Yeah, there is a requirement to notify stated by March 1st. Query whether or not you can notify them and then pull that back, I don't know. You probably could, but you have to at least give the notification by March 1st.
Does it have to be specific to a school? I mean, there was, are we just saying, we're looking to possibly close one school for the 25 school year?
I think it's specific to a school.
It's specific to a school.
So we actually have to name a school that we're targeting?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. And then just one comment I'll make, just on, I don't know, Rob, if you want to talk about it now, but combining the teams, I think that's going to be detrimental to our students, right? So I'm not open to combining JV or varsity teams. I think it's taken this district 20 years to build identities, both at, both at east and north. So I think that's, that's going to be detrimental to our students and, and just the identities of both of those schools. So from my perspective, we have to look for another million dollars, because I'm not open to that one, so.
I mean, I think we really need to explain to the community how important it is to focus on the transportation piece. It's almost $2 million alone, but if you add in middle school and late buses, middle school, club, and late buses, it's another $740,000. That's a huge chunk without it impacting, it's inconveniencing, but it's not impacting the students' opportunities. It's literally transportation. So I, and I agree with, with Vinnie that there, I don't see any value in combining high school sports. It's, we're a two-district high school, and, you know, it's stripping away the identity of each school.
Meredith?
Michelle, when you say that by combining the varsity and JV teams, it's $1,051,000. You did not take into account how much it would cost to bus these children from one of the high schools to the other, right?
No, we did not this time.
Okay, so it's not a true 1 million, there's going to be, there's, there's some gray area there. Because our high schools are a very good distance apart from each other. But I also would not be in favor of combining them, I just think you're taking too much away from them.
Just one thing to point out, last time that we had this happen, it was during the years of 2015, when we had gap elimination. And we cut 50% of the funding to clubs, okay? And we realized that we had so many more kids on the street, you know, not doing the right thing, getting in trouble with law, you know, with the law, you know, just in a bad place, you know? So I agree that we need to keep our kids busy, we need to keep them occupied, we need to keep them, you know, engaged in different, you know, activities and events within the district. So I agree, I mean, you know, you have a school that's about 20 years old, and a school that's, you know, CHM North is 60, 65 years old. Yeah, so, so the thing is, you have a lot of cultures that have been developed over the period of time. And, you know, a lot of pride that goes at the schools that had the opportunity to go to, you know, homecoming at CHM North this year, and homecoming at CHM East. And the amount of pride and excitement that goes into those events, that's very visible by all of the students at each one of the school. I agree with my colleague said, I would not want to, you know, consolidate that. Only because, like I said, next year, even if we had to do it for one year, the following year, the loss of interest in kids wanting to go out and play sports, the next problem we're going to have is, oh, we don't have enough to, you know, to field two teams. And we're going to be stuck with that for forever. It's not a one year. And it's not something we could do for one year, and then be able to bounce back and have full teams again, so. I would agree, we'd have to find that one, one point, you know, million, you know, $1.51 million, so.
And before anybody comes at us and says, you guys are all sport oriented and blah, 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 because this is what I get phone calls and emails about all the time, we're not only about sports. This board, I think this board in particular, is extremely diverse. We have all, I don't have children in this district anymore, but I have children who were special ed, sports, clubs. We have children amongst all of us that get involved in everything. So we're not leaning on sports that way. We're looking at it as the amount of children that make up our varsity and JV teams, to try to combine them into one team, take that opportunity away from all those excess children, and then have those excess children that are of high school age out on the streets after school, instead of, I mean, I'll be very honest, one of my children really stayed the course because of some of his coaches. So if he wasn't at where he needed to be after school for sports, he may have taken a different road. And so we have to look at it like that. We're not looking at it sports versus anything else. We're looking at it as, that's a lot of children that would be out on the street.
So Michelle, just to recap, right? So when we look at the 380 million, right? We really got to look at adding back in the 4.7 million, which is the clubs, the athletics, the BOSI's and arts, all of that stuff, right? So we have 385 million. So we need to find $6.5 million, right, worth of cuts, really, to balance that out, to provide everything we're doing today in terms of, you know, the arts, music, sports, et cetera, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because again, to Meredith's point, right, this is a very diverse board, and we've always been accused of leaning to one side, but I don't think you can say that about this board. We fought very hard last year for the music program, the arts programs, just keeping sports. Look at the folks that were in here tonight, right, all of our music kids. It's important we keep all of that stuff, right? So we need to look hard to hit the six and a half million. So it's going to be some very tough choices we have to do.
Stephanie?
So using my phone with the calculator, because math, just math. If I'm doing this correctly, if we did eliminate late buses in middle school, club late buses, and then took the revised transportation limits, that would be two, almost $2.5 million in savings? So right there, if you took that off the $6.5 million, we're saving programs for kids by adjusting our transportation needs. But it's, it's planning, which, which we obviously should have done last year for this, but we didn't. So now we can plan something like this for the future, which would help us in perpetuity, right? If we adjusted all this. It would be planning a.
You realize the savings.
Right, it would be planning a surplus. So you are planning for it, you're just not, you're not putting the numbers in, but you're, you're anticipating a surplus. Well, technically, you are, because we're getting it right. Well, technically you are, because we're getting it right back next year. But are you planning for it to be a reduction next year?
We have to budget for the transportation as if there was no proposition, because if it were not to pass, you have to pay for the transportation.
Okay, so if it passes, what happens with the budget after the pass?
Well, then you have that one point, or almost 2 million dollars, 2.4 million dollars.
And we could add stuff back in?
You would look to, to be a surplus at the end when you close out the following year. So that would again, close the gap that we'd still be facing next year.
But would we be able to save things from next year? That he, his point is that it's getting taken out of the budget?
The budget is already voted on without those items. So then you would have to do budget adjustments. You'd have to have the board approve.
Which we would do. Would we not, to, to, to add things back for, for the students?
It depends on what the situation is. I mean, once again, Mike brings a part of a point that, you know, next year, we could be looking at an 6 to 10 million dollar. Because in that savings, there's a lot of one shots, you know, that we're not, we can't count on the following year. So
So we have to make some really hard decisions even tonight, because we have such a big gap. And if, if we can't promise the community that we're going to bring things back, then we need to make these decisions now.
Yes. Meredith, and then we'll come back to Vinnie.
So, that 1.75 is recurring. Every year, we would be saving that, if it passed.
If it passed, yes. That would be removed from our budget. We would be shrinking our budget, which is
What we could do right now is say, okay, we're going to take 1.75 from reserves, and it's going to go towards bridging this gap. And then, if it passes, wonderful, we get our 1.75 back into our reserves. If it fails, then we have to start making even more cuts for the following year. We have to cross that bridge when we get there.
Right. Then you're, you're even deeper in for the next year.
So, Vinnie, and then we'll come back to Mike.
So I want to switch back to the closing of the schools, because I think that's, we have a pressing deadline on that. So I don't know if we want to talk about that now. And if we have to name a school, I'll just put it out there. I think if we're looking at elementary, I think middle school, Mrs. Trombetta, you would agree, I think that's a challenge for this year, right?
To do, to do a middle school, this should be a challenge, because you have to redistrict in that time period as well.
So an elementary school is more likely, right? So I'm going to put on the table that I think we target Merrimack for closure, just because of the enrollment. And we can redistrict those to Tamarack and Grundy. So we can discuss that. But that's sort of what I want to put out on the table.
Meredith?
I think it's unfortunate that our back against, is against the wall here, because I think honestly, we have other schools that would be more, it would be better for us to close, let's just put it out there, Linwood, because of the parking situation, the drop-off situation, and lots of other things. So if we go ahead and we say, well, we have to close, we have to name a school, and we have to close a school, and we have to do it right now, it's got to be Merrimack, because they have the least amount of kids in the whole school, then we are cutting our nose to spite our face again. And I know, I am not one of those people that likes to take any money out of my savings account. I hate it. But I think that to, to do it for the one year, to get these things in order and do them properly, because when you do them in a half-ass manner, you're going to get a half-ass result. And then we're going to say, hey, guys, we asked you to do this, we asked you to do this, we closed this school, we did that, and now we are back in a bad situation again. And I don't think, I don't, I think that we need to look at this through more clear eyes, and we don't have the time and the opportunity to do that. Because if we really sat and looked at every single school, there were reasons why other schools should close over that one.
Just a comment on Linwood, right? I think that's our most populous elementary. But I had put on the table, I spoke to some people about taking back Tecumseh from BOSIs and moving that to Linwood. But that's longer term, because we're locked into a lease, right? So when you look at Linwood, that's, you know, we have over 560 kids in that school, right? Where do you put them? There's nowhere to put them.
And I think I sent him one of the letters.
That's our most populous school out of the elementaries.
We would have to give a
It's also our furthest east, and they're surrounding schools.
There's no other school east of that, right. You know, Tecumseh would be great, you know, if we took that back, but we're locked into a couple of more years with BOSIs. And then you close Linwood, and you move them to Tecumseh, which was the recommendation of the facilities committee 10 years ago, right?
But you can't
You can't do that. That's, that's longer term.
They wouldn't let us do, they wouldn't let us give them that school and change of that school. They won't, we can't do anything like that.
That's longer term. So I think short term, Merrimack is, Merrimack's the target. That's just based on enrollment, right?
You have to let, the lease can be terminated, but it has to be noticed by August 1st for the next year. So we would have to do it for 26, 27.
It's still something to consider, right? That's not, you know, we can do Merrimack, and then we can still look at Tecumseh and Linwood, and flip those. And then you sell the land, Mike, to your point, which you always talk about, is get that back on the tax rolls and sell it to the developer. I mean, so there's lots of options, right?
Ms. Sernia?
Just two, two things I forgot to bring up. With regard to the transportation proposal, I think in all fairness and transparency, we should, if we're going to put that proposal out there, have transportation, put border maps up of where, where transportation lines would be from the schools, right? So if it's going to be a mile, go out a mile, you know, show where that line's going to be. So everybody who's voting on that knows where their kid falls, right? That, that's, we should do that. Number two is, I, I, Meredith, I know, I understand the argument, but the argument about using reserves was the same argument made to use the $3 million last year. Let's just use $3 million to bridge the gap to get to this year, right? That, as I said, you were going to cut yourself into extinction. That's why Brent said in October, do not use your reserves to pay for ongoing day-to-day operations, because you're just going to make yourself bankrupt, right? So I, you know, the, I understand the 11 million dollars, the leftover, the inappropriate fund bouts, but to go into the reserves to keep bridging gaps is just going to accelerate death spiral. So I can't, I can't, I can't raise my hand for that.
Any other comments?
All right. So the only other thing is, is what Mike put up, is that, look, we have, we have to make significant cuts, potentially closing a school for next year. I mean, it's inevitable. I think we have to close the school for next year. Mike proposed a piercing of the cap. I know last year, yeah, a little combination. So instead of going out with, you know, something that would generate 6 million dollars, go out with something that generates a little bit less. It's a little bit easier on the taxpayer, but at the same time, you're making changes. But I do agree, like, once again, I learned a long time ago, I'm not going to name a school. I'm going to leave that up to administration. It's not, not really my job to name a school. You know, it's what we pay you guys to, you know, to recommend to us. But with that said, you know, we definitely have to close something next year. And the question is, is we have to find out from legal counsel whether or not, if we put something in, okay, and we can't get it done in time, can we pull it out? You know, can we take it out?
Just for the record, so I'm not arbitrarily naming Merrimack, that was in consultation with administration, and we talked about
No, no, no.
Okay, just, just want to get that out there.
Yeah, no, listen. Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that. Like I said, it was a recommendation of administration, based upon enrollment. Yeah, so. But these are things that we have to look at. The other option, like I said, is what Mike proposes, is piercing the cap, going out with a little bit higher percentage, you know, to generate a little bit more revenue, and then still implement some of these things, and maybe save some of the extra curriculum for kids. That's the only other option that we have. But we need to know, you know, this is why we need to do some, schedule some tentative meetings to have that discussion. These are the things that are on the table. I mean, you know, last year, if that Pierce budget would have, would have happened, we wouldn't be looking, we wouldn't have been having this discussion. So it would have corrected the levy for a few years down the road.
Correct. The levy would have been 6 million dollars higher.
Yeah, we, we shared with the community. I'm sorry, 51%, in my opinion, is a past budget. You know, unfortunately, the requirements on municipal, you know, schools, not even municipalities, is that we have to have 60%. But no other municipality has held to that same, that same guideline. Not state government, not county government, they need a 50% plus one. So that's the frustrating thing, is that we have our hands tied. And as a result of the way the law is written, 2% cap, 60% majority, we're looking at having to cut opportunities for kids, close buildings. So this conversation obviously will be continued. But what do you need from us tonight? What's that?
Well, you know, if they, if, if we're doing something by the first, we do need to name a building then. So I don't know if we, you know, and we can't do that, it's got to be an open session, so we've got to name it tonight. Right? I mean, unless we have to call another meeting to come back later in the week, which I really don't want to do.
You'd be better off naming a building tonight.
Right.
I mean, we, I think we'd have, want to follow up with a more formal resolution, because there are a couple of other legal things we've, we talked about, policy-wise, that we have
If we have to do it, tonight's the night.
But, yeah.
We can't keep kicking this, right? We're running out of time.
That's what I'm saying.
7800. I'll make that motion right now, if that's
All right. So before you do it, just explain what, what that is, Mike. Well, maybe somebody could
Okay, Vinnie, yeah, go ahead.
Just so people understand. I think we need to read it verbatim. I think, I think if we kind of explain what it is, okay, and why we would need to suspend it.
So, so the, kind of community is aware, we do have a policy 7800, deals with the closing of facilities, and outlines some of the things the Board of Education would do in consideration of that, given the time and, and leeway and runway to do it, which involved, you know, talk about the age of the buildings, having a study done, perhaps forming a committee of the community. This policy is not required by state law. However, it's a policy we had in place. So if we're going to decide, we're going to try to close a building, we probably would need to suspend this policy, because we would not be able to meet the requirements of it in time to actually make those savings available for the following year. So I'll propose, I'll make a motion that we at least suspend this policy for the current, at least for the current school year, with the way we can move forward with the decision of the board. So I'll make a motion that policy 7800 is put in suspension until June 30th, 2025. Maybe we want, actually, we probably should go till June 30, 2026.
Just suspend it?
Okay, so I'll revise my motion, that policy 7800 be suspended indefinitely until such time as the board has decided to reinstate it.
Motion placed. Thomas, all in favor?
Aye.
So, so, you, you know, in all circumstances, I would rather have a committee to do this. I just don't think we have the luxury of that right now, because the option is we go deeper into staff cuts, which then directly affect our, our students. So for that, I'm going to vote yes to suspend the policy, because the alternative is not good for our staff or our students, so.
Any other comments?
All right. So we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Policy 7800 suspended.
And I agree with you 100% then. I, I think, given the circumstances that we're facing, we would not have that luxury of, of being able to balance our budget. All right? Any other questions regarding the, I think we need to pick some tentative dates, as to when we want to meet. You want to, you know, put your availability out to administration so we could, you know, come to an agreement. And some board members that are not here tonight, so I'm reluctant to schedule something tentatively without having Laura or Alex here tonight.
Yeah, so Rob, just want to close the loop. So we suspended the policy. Now we have to take the next step of name a school. Do we want to do that tonight? Or do we want to get a recommendation and then go back into open session later this week, which I don't really think we need, but go to your guidance, Chris.
I think you're better served by picking a school tonight, and just say, this is the school that we're going to report
To target.
To SCD. I think you're going to need, if you're going to move forward and ultimately move forward, obviously, you have to do that quickly, but I think we need a more formal resolution to close the school. But the resolution tonight would be to, to name the school that's going to be reported to the State Education Department by March 1st for closure.
Okay. And does administration have a recommendation that you want to put out there, so we can vote on it, or?
At this time, without redistricting, it would have to be Merrimack.
Okay.
So is everyone okay with naming Merrimack as the school that would be reported to state, with the understanding that it could be pulled back, okay, or, and/or modified? Yes?
I'm getting emotional, and I don't know why. So I need to take a break. But while I understand this is necessary, it's heartbreaking. And it's my home school, and it's just absolutely brutal. So I need a minute to go to the bathroom.
Absolutely.
But I can't rationally, and I, I, you know, this is what we were elected to do. So I just, I'm going to have to take a break.
Not an easy decision, by no means. It's not. I think it's heartbreaking for everybody here. But we have to plow ahead.
So next board, just to make your availability, Patty, if you could send out a couple of dates to the entire board, or Allison, if you can send dates out to the entire board for maybe one or two tentative meetings, you know, in between our, our meetings. Listen, this is not the first time we had to meet every week, you know. Yeah, I remember board meetings, we met three times a week.
Twice a week.
Yeah. So hopefully, it doesn't get to that point, but I think that we're going to need a couple of extra meetings to iron things out and, and, you know, have a better idea as to what's, what's staying, what's going. All right? Are we okay with that?
Okay.
All right. Our next budget discussion is March, March 12th, right? Put the tentative meetings in there.
With the tentative meetings in between, yes.
Thank you, Michelle.
I would think so.
All right.
We have five.
No other discussions in superintendent's report?
Rob, do we have to take a vote on giving authority for the district to report that school? I think we probably
I think so.
All right. So could you do me a favor? Could you put together a resolution real quick, and
Sure.
Or read it? Or maybe if we could add it to the end?
Yeah, yeah. I just think we need to make that official, right?
Yes. Okay. Should have had the student board members go first. Kind of a hard discussion to follow, guys. But please share with us what's going on in school. Scott, you want to go first?
Good evening, everyone. Try and turn a little bit, make it into a positive. CHM North, we are starting to prepare for March Madness in St. Baldrick's coming up. I've been working with the advisors from a bunch of different clubs, student government, Interact Club. We've opened signups for the basketball tournament that we hold every year for March Madness, and we're generating ideas for a bunch of fun events around the school. Congratulations to the CHM North Varsity Arrowettes for winning the national championship at the NDA Finals in Orlando. And also a congratulations.
Yay!
And also a congratulations to the CHM North Varsity Wrestling Team for their trip to the state tournament, and for those individual wrestlers who played.
Thank you.
Also, CHM North cheer took sixth and seventh in the nation. In the nation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one more thing. Tomorrow night at North, we have the Advanced Ensembles Concert at 7 o'clock.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you all had a great break. So the CHM senior class government has collaborated with GO USA, and made t-shirts in three colors, gray, white, and black, all to be sold in the high school, middle school, and elementary schools. That are all the East feeder schools. So that can be sold to anybody within, like, the East and East feeder schools, elementary or middle, or high. And we are in preparations for our March Madness Day, which is in the middle of April.
Thank you, Mike.
And East cheer is going states.
Okay. Brings us to item D, approval of the minutes, and a motion to approve the minutes on February 5th. Mike Sernia, second, Meredith. Questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. The visitors, visitors, net. Business sentence, we have a consent agenda A through C. Any motion, please? Vinnie Reynolds, in a second. Mike Sernia, questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. And five, we have personnel consent agenda A through K. Any motion, please? Matthew Bowman, second by Mike Sernia, questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Mr. Cable?
We'd just like to take a moment to recognize the retirement of Ms. Rebecca De Souza. Ms. De Souza is a NACOMAS teacher in the elementary setting, and focused the last number of years in math, supporting students in NACOMAS, and then also being throughout our elementary schools over the last 20-plus years. We'd like to congratulate her and her family on her retirement, and wish her all the very best, and good health and happiness.
Okay, item six, we have a personal consent agenda for support staff, items A through F, and a motion, please. Meredith, second, and Matthew Bowman, questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Mr. Scavo? Also on the agenda this evening, we have a retirement of one of our custodians, Ms. Gwen Delgado. While she's been with us for just about six years here on a full-time basis, she's subbed with us previously, and we just want to wish her all the best in her retirement, and congratulations to her.
Okay, item seven, we have the personnel consent agenda A through D for administrators. A motion, please. Vinnie Reynolds, second by Matthew Bowman, questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Motion's carried.
So also celebrating today in, um, the rear of our boardroom, we do have two administrators who were just board-approved. Um, as we know, um, we did conduct some searches, uh, for the next High School North position, and in the back with his family, if we could just ask him to stand to be recognized, we have Mr. Patrick Burke. Mr. Burke has been working with us as an assistant principal at High School North. Um, and this year in particular, uh, Mr. Jim Nolan, former North principal and superintendent, has been at the helm of that ship. And we look forward to, uh, Mr. Burke, uh, taking on that as of July 1st, and congratulations. Um, in addition to that, with his family, we also have Mr. Ralph Carassio. Mr. Carassio has also been working, uh, for us and with us for the last just about four years almost as an assistant principal, where he was over at High School North, and then currently over at Sagamore Middle School under, um, the principalship of Ms. Lisa Johnson. Um, the district has, um, enhanced a new program, um, and we created a Director of Alternative Learning, which is a special program for students and supporting, uh, those students across the district. And we look forward to expanding that and congratulate him on his appointment to this important new, um, administrative role, uh, to help support students. Congratulations.
Just going to ask, uh, both of you guys come up. We're going to take a picture with the board, and we'll put it on our, our website. Congratulations to both the, well done.
I guess.
Okay, item eight is, um, action items, we have consent agenda A through B, which is settlement of litigation. Any motion, please? Mr. Assurnia, second by Mr. Reynolds. Questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Item nine brings us to contracts, we have consent agenda A through E. Any in motion, please? Mr. Assurnia, second by Mr. Bowman. Questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item 10 is donations, we have consent agenda A through B, donations from Merrimack PTA and Seneca PTA. Motion, please? Um, Mr. Assurnia, second? Any second, Mr. Reynolds? Questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Eleven, Committee on Special Education, we have consent agenda A through B. Any motion, please? Mr. Bowman, second by Ms. Volpe, Stephanie Volpe. Questions or discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Twelve monthly reports, any committees want to report? Again, Ms. Volpe?
We have the Legislative Roundtable tomorrow night. Um, one of the questions I wanted to ask is, do you think we need to reschedule that and maybe make it a board meeting? Would we need that time? Because we're going to be here, some, most, some of us are going to be here anyway.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah, it's the.
Yeah, you have, you have to give, no, 25, I know this.
Oh, okay, all right, well. That's true, okay. So, um, with the Legislative Roundtable, we had a meeting and we, um, picked a whole bunch of advocacy points. Um, pretty much it was, you know, unfunded mandates, special education, um, things that we had gone through in this budget, so it's kind of redundant. But, um, according to, we have the RSVP list, which right now is Doug Smith, I don't know who Murray's first name is.
Dean.
Dean, and then, is it Rebecca Cassay? Yeah. And then, um, we have a couple of maybes still. So I, I won't name them because I don't, I feel it's, and then, um, Dana's following up. One, one of the, the things I do want to mention is Dana has been putting out emails, and the committee's not replying. So I don't know, except for one, which I don't want to name people, but there's, you know, it doesn't, I feel like our advocacy is not being taken seriously, and now maybe it will be. But she's running this alone, except for one person who I want to, I will thank after.
I know Chris, Chris is very, very involved, Chris Farrel.
So, um, I still think it's going to be extremely productive. I think that now we really have a fire lit where we could get some real, hopefully, advocacy from our elected officials for this district, so, um, other than that, I, what else do we, is there anything you need to know?
Just for the, I know, Allison, you got an email today from Dana about revising that, um, flyer that would have links, okay? And those links would actually not bring us to Satcham, you know, uh, you know, a budget page, but it'll actually.
I'm glad you brought that up. That's actually going to be a social media blitz after the meeting. It's good to have it if we can for the meeting so that we can give it to the elected officials, but then the, the committee is going to do a social media blitz to help advocate for Satcham so that we don't have to be in this position we're in constantly. And, you know, for example, the, the education for placements for kids who are really high expense, high need, we should be reimbursed for that, and we're not. And, and it's, it blows my mind that we have to sacrifice to help our kids. So that's one of the, um.
I, I think that flyer, not to cut, you know, if that flyer talks about how it directly impacts Satcham. I think that was the consensus of the committee was, look, you know, we're, we're talking about maybe, you know, asking to change the guidelines on the TANs so that we're not spending $2.5 million in, you know, in, in, you know, in, uh, interest rate, yeah.
Yeah.
So, once again, that link will bring us to an area that says how it affects Satcham, and this is what we're asking.
And this is eventually going to go out to the public so that we can, you know, advocate for this. Um, and it's starting tomorrow, the kickoff is tomorrow with the, the Legislative Roundtable.
Even if all's we have is three of those, the three people that represent us.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I, we normally only have about six anyway, so it's not like, and that's for a community forum. What we wanted to change this year is we want real advocacy, we want them to see the real issue instead of it being like a campaign meeting, which is what the forums sometimes turned into.
And just, if you could just remind her, what time is it tomorrow night?
7:30.
And that's across the hallway?
Across the hallway, and Dana's requesting it could be in a square table? I don't know if she put it in the email, I'm sorry? No, it's, it's not, and that, that was part of the reason we changed it. We want to have real roots, advocacy at this level so that we can basically beg for help. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, plead.
Vinnie?
So we have the Budget Advisory Committee scheduled for tomorrow night too, so I'm thinking we should probably cancel that because, and attend the legislative one. Michelle, you okay with that? Okay. We can re, yeah, we can reconvene the group next week maybe even. And we're going to be meeting more often anyway, so, okay.
Anything from Kirkham Council, or Diversity?
Diversity has a Zoom meeting next week on Tuesday.
Tuesday at 5 o'clock. Yeah, we moved it, it was actually supposed to be tonight, and with the addition of the, the exec session beforehand, we chose to move it from in-person tonight to Zoom. But in the meantime, we have the Planning Committee for the community event that, uh, the, the members on that, uh, committee, which are part of the Diversity Committee, are meeting tomorrow to start the planning, uh, phase of the event that usually happens in the spring.
Any other, uh, comments for committee reports? All right, uh, all business, we have no all business. Um, board discussion items, we discussed it with our budget. Uh, future discussion items, item 16, hit 70?
We really need some information on Union Avenue with everything that's going on. I, I mean, it's, 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 it's going slow, and it's, it's not fair to our community to have to go through this financial stress without knowing what's going on on something that we decided in December of 2022.
We were asked to submit, um, a couple other documents up to the state that was submitted a week and a half ago, so we're waiting on the project manager up there to approve it.
Any other future discussion items? Okay, and this budget will be our future discussion item, I mean, more folk, main focus. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for March, uh, March 12th, 2025. Uh, any in motion to go to exec session to discuss personal matters made to the board involving staff members and a suit and appeal? All right, Matthew Bowman, second by Mike Assurnia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Have a good evening, everyone.